Is always.
Good morning and welcome to the December 22nd, 2020 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. This is a special B O C C meeting this morning as we are meeting on a Tuesday instead of on our regular Wednesday. I would like to remind everyone that the Health Department will not be taking COVID-19 samples towards the end of this week due to labs not opening or not being open in processing or testing for COVID-19. So Thursday, December 24th through Sunday, December 27th, the Health Department will not be taking COVID-19 samples, but you might be able to find another location on our website through the testing site locator that will be open and will be taking samples over the weekend. I'd also like to remind everyone that county offices will be closed on Friday in observance of Christmas. Be sure to follow us on social media. We've got a special holiday message coming out from county leaders, including several commissioners as well. It's a very festive message and certainly welcome in times of uncertainty like we are currently in. I'd also like to remind everyone that we still have our Christmas tree recycling program. It began yesterday and will continue until January 24th, so feel free to visit any of the Wichita or Sedgwick County locations to dispose of your natural Christmas trees. And just a reminder to make sure that you take all of the lights and ornaments off of the tree before we turn it into mulch. And with that, Chairman, we've got a short meetings. There's a fire agenda and then we have our new business on the regular meeting for an emergency sick leave discussion and then also a cares discussion. So Chairman, I will let you start the meeting.
Thank you, Kate. Appreciate the introduction and welcome, everybody. Thank you again, Commissioners, for a Tuesday, December 22nd, again, another special meeting. Are we done with special meetings for 2020 or is there going to be? Let's hope this is our last one. I got a thumbs up. That means we're almost, we're almost positive that maybe we won't have one. Okay, so thank you again, Commissioners, for coming on a Tuesday. I will call the meeting to order and thanks for those people that are watching on KPTS and other venues. So Madam Clerk, item please.
Roll call. Commissioner Glasscock.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item A, Sedgwick County Emergency Sick Leave Discussion.
Good morning, Sheena.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Sheena Schmutz. I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer. Today, I am here to present a proposal for a sick leave program that is intended to provide a one-time benefit for employees who are impacted by COVID-19 in 2021. As you recall, Congress passed the Families First Corona Relief Act, known as the FFCRA, which has two provisions for leave. For our employees, this includes emergency paid sick leave, where an employee is allowed up to two weeks of paid sick leave, and the second leave provision is the expanded family medical leave, which allows eligible employees up to 10 additional weeks of leave at two-thirds the pay rate for dependent care for school closures. The FFCRA is set to expire on December 31st. As of last pay period, we have had over 974 employees use the FFCRA. Over 888 employees used emergency paid sick leave, 86 have used the expanded family medical leave, and in total, over $768,000 of CARES spend has been used to pay for this leave. We know that COVID-19 will still be here in 2021 and the vaccine will still take several months to reach the general population as well as our employees. Leadership is requesting an exemption to our current sick leave policy to allow for the Sedgwick County Emergency Sick Leave Program. In short, this would allow eligible employees the use of paid sick leave to quarantine or care for family members in quarantine for 10 calendar days. Employees would be eligible for this program if they did not exhaust the FFCRA in 2020. This would be extended to all full-time and part-time employees as it currently is under the FFCRA. Sedgwick County Emergency Sick Leave will be paid for regularly scheduled work shifts that fall within the 10-day calendar period. This is consistent with the new quarantine guidelines. We will still have an application process for approval and timekeeping. Funds for this leave will come from the departmental budgets and grant funds, only if the grant disallows it, will come from the county's contingency fund. Since positions are fully funded, we see a very minimal impact on county funds, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. So this is for employees who have not used it currently, who have not used it before?
Who have not exhausted.
Exhausted.
Yes.
Okay. So if they used a couple of days, they can use up the rest if they need to.
Yes. So we would take what the available balance would be in 2021 and just subtract what they used in 2020.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the Commission? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Good motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager. We have two speakers this morning, Brent and Lindsay. Brent Shelton will get up and talk about, ask for two votes from the Commission, one to authorize payment to some external agencies with CARES money and another to approve an amendment to the subrecipient agreement for the Y M C A. He'll also have one receive and file item. Lindsay will ask for a vote regarding additional monies and final monies going to the WSU MDL equipment acquisition, and then she'll have a receive and file summary of CARES spending at this point. So with that, we'll start with Brent and work our way through.
Morning, Brent. Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner, Members of the County Commission. For the record, Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. As Manager Stoltz mentioned, we have two items, which I'm going to request votes for your authorization, and then it'll be a receive and file of the standard safe operating grant, safe operating grant update. So to begin with, you were received an email yesterday, and I think Kate has a spreadsheet, maybe. Have you, okay, you already have received that spreadsheet, which indicates seven agencies, six public health and social service agencies in one city for whom the audit process has been completed, and we're requesting that you authorize funding for those seven agencies in a cumulative amount of $119,818.52. We can answer any questions you have about the details of those, but those represents, in some cases, fully funding that award or funding the amount that they have submitted reimbursement requests for at this point. So at this point, I would either stand for questions or request authorization that we fund those, that you authorize payment of those awards.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Again, thanks, Brent, for providing this spreadsheet and all the work you've been doing. So these are like the final one, two, three, four, five, six, seven requests?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't see a problem. Does any Commissioners have any comments or questions? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve these dispersments as presented.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. No other comment? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, Brent, next up.
The next item is housekeeping item. On December 9th, you approved some extensions to the contracts for some of the subrecipients. These were taking and allowing some expenditures after November 30th, going up to December 20th. One of the agencies for which we had verbally okayed them to provide some additional service into December was the Y M C A, when they expanded their remote learning centers for students after U S D 259 announced that they would be going fully remote. And inadvertently, that was left off of the list of agencies that you approved expenditures up through December 20th. So at this time, I would request that you vote to approve an amendment to the subrecipient agreement for the Y M C A, giving them until December 20th to request reimbursement for funds.
Okay. Not a conflict in dates. December 20th was two days ago. This is kind of a cleanup.
It's a cleanup. They've already spent the money. It was within the original award amount. It was just that they had the money and we had the need, and so they fulfilled that during that timeframe.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the subrecipient agreement for the Y M C A.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any Commissioners have any comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Brent, next.
And the final item for me this morning is an update for you on the Safe Operating Grant Program. As you recall, 2014 applications were received for this program. We are at the point now we have 1,468 non-duplicative applications, estimating about 7.2 million in total awards, and at the end of today, after this check run, we will have paid out $5,757,861 to 1,171 applicants. So the money continues to go out, and we're on track to wind that program up shortly.
Quite a program at 5,000 each, right?
Yes.
Yep. Or less. Okay. This is a receive and file report. I'll make a motion that we receive and file the Safe Operating Grants Report.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks again, Brent. Appreciate it. And next up is the stack of paper lady. Lindsay, welcome to the meeting as always.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Poulousso, CFO, and yes, I own my stacks of paper.
Yes.
But that's how I can make sure I can answer your questions, so no apologies yet. So just a few items to go through this morning. As Tom already referenced and I mentioned in the email to you yesterday, we're absolutely thrilled to be in a position to say that we have now received enough documentation to fully reimburse WSU for the startup costs of their molecular diagnostic laboratory. And so I would recommend that you authorize payment of $117,365 on 22 cents. That is on top of the 3.88 million that's already been paid out, and so that will literally bring us to 4 million and zero cents that have been paid out, and that would go out on today's, hopefully out on today's check run if you authorize that this morning.
Okay. I understand that they submitted a little bit more north of the 4 million, but we're staying consistent with our previous commitment that we did. And Commissioner Howell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say thank you once again to the whole team, really. And I say team, there's a lot of people involved in that discussion, and they came together, I would say, over the last three to four weeks, I don't know how many times, quite a few times, and this is more complicated than the other things we've paid out. Just wanted to say that upfront. To compare them with anything else we've done so far, I think would be not accurate. This is more complicated for whatever reason, but nevertheless, we prevailed and they got them across the finish line. So I am, just want to say thank you to everyone involved in this, and this MDL lab is a game changer for this community once again, so let me just say that upfront. I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we would authorize the payment, the final payment to the lab set up here, the Molecular Diagnostics Laboratory for Wichita State University, in the amount of $117,365.22.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion and a second. Any comments? I would just like to comment as well that this MDL lab has probably surpassed what we expected as a community. I've had, I've had many unsolicited comments of support from businesses, just happy, happy, happy that they have their designated saliva test gatherer person that's authorized, and it's just been a game changer for especially plants that are testing people weekly and in the mornings and getting afternoon results, and it's just been a very, very positive economic impact for our community. So thanks again, Commissioner Howell, and I believe Lacy Cruz or Commissioner Cruz helped as well a little bit. So thank you both for being active and delivering this to the finish line. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to all of the staff for working this, and especially thank you for WSU for putting this together. It's a great asset for this region. As you all know, last Wednesday, when we had our meeting, I wasn't here. I came in by Zoom because I'd been exposed to COVID Friday by following the rules. Friday, I was able to take a test. I got the results back in about 25 hours, came out negative, so I don't know that we would have gotten the test back that quickly if we weren't using the WSU laboratory out there. I may still been on quarantine waiting for results. So I think it's a tremendous thing that we've done, and it's a definite asset to Wichita and Sedgwick County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. There's been a motion and a second to approve the MDL final payment. Don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Lindsay, yes, next item.
I'm still here.
So the next item is our weekly spending status update, so this will just be a receive
and file. From last week, we are up to $64,851,522, which is just about 800,000 from where we were last week. The bulk of that, of course, has occurred within CARES. We did have a slight increase in the COVID General Fund. That was before we knew that Congress was considering extending the Coronavirus Relief Fund, our CARES funding, out, and so we had gotten some estimates on COVID-related items that would not be received by 12:30, and so we use that COVID General Fund as the source of funding there. Within CARES, we are up to $55,014,572 spent directly on county needs. That does include the $4 million that was set aside for the WSU reimbursement, so that will not reflect in new spending going forward, what you just approved. For the county needs, we're up $232,123 from last week. The bulk of that is on cleaning services, almost $51,000 in cleaning services just in a week. Another $23,000 for advertising and payments to our media partners. Another $33,000 for Q-list, so we're used to hearing about that for the tag office. The Health Department actually is going to be using Q-list for their testing at the Extension Center so that folks can remain in their cars and be told when it's time to come in, also at their mobile testing sites to advise people, and then also at their clinic. Another $4,300 on N95 masks, $5,300 on additional oxygen tanks for EMS, $4,800 for an inventory truck for the Health Department to transport loads of vaccine, and then miscellaneous costs for utilities, at least space, and interpreter services, custodial supplies, some other smaller expenses. We are up just a bit, about $500,000 from what you authorized in spending last week for external-funded agencies through CARES. Of course, as always, schools have already had their full allocation paid out. You did authorize a small increase for cities last week, so that went out. And then the bulk, of course, $401,296 was to approve public health and social service agencies, including the African-American Council of Elders, where we are acting as the paying agent for them. And then, as Brent reported, we have paid out from the county's direct allocation, $717,861 to support safe operating grants. So that's 147 grants that have come from the county CARES allocation. The rest, of course, have come from state spark. So moving to that portion, we did receive 9.3 million from the state, directly tied to unemployment, so all of that was invested in business or workforce development. Those workforce development reports are now in, and so you'll begin to see that we'll be authorizing some payments to go out for that, and that should exhaust the rest of that state spark money that otherwise was spent on those safe operating grants or on the PPE kits. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have on our spending status. Otherwise, I'd recommend you receive and file.
Okay. Thanks again for the update and the continued, gives me confidence that we're watching the dollars and the pennies.
And the pennies.
Right. So thank you very much. I'll make a motion to receive and file. Oh, Commissioner Cruz, you have a question?
Thank you, Chairman. No, I don't really have a question. I just know that we are coming to the end, and I can't imagine how like a weight has lifted probably maybe a little bit. I just want to really thank you for all of the work that you've done and your team. And I also wanted to give a shout out. Tom Weekly will send, as they come, the updates from our federal lobbyists, Thorn Run Partners, and Jim Davenport sent out a really great recap of what the new stimulus package that was just passed. And so I posted that on social media, and people really appreciate the fact that they can read it out. And so, you know, local tax dollars pay for that stuff, and I'm glad that we're able to provide the information to our citizens because it was well-received yesterday. So I just want to thank Jim Davenport. I'm sure he's listening. Kidding. But he is very receptive, and he always responds really quickly to me, too, when I have questions for him, so I think that's money well spent. I'm glad that we have him there in Washington advocating for us, and I appreciate those reports. I might not respond to you every single time you send them to me, but I do read them, and they're full of information. So I just wanted to state that real fast. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. You bet. There's a motion to receive and file. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion to receive and file, seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Lindsay, thanks again for the report, and thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for your comments. I just, can you summarize or is it part of agenda, just the new package that just approved yesterday?
Sure.
Our approach. I'm trying to summarize your memo.
Oh, absolutely.
Which I agree with, but we're going to try to put everything we can at the finish line this year.
Yes.
To be clean for next year.
Yes. So I'm happy to explain that. So we do know, of course, that Coronavirus Relief Funds, which is the bucket we received our CARES funding through, has been extended through the bill that Congress passed last night that we expect to be signed into law anytime now. That does extend it to December 31st, 2021. Now, last week, you all approved a spending plan, and that spending plan authorized, as of December 30th, us proceeding with personnel reimbursement for our frontline public safety, our frontline public health folks. We would still like to proceed with the spending plan that you all approved, and so we would essentially keep any of the buckets that are external funding in place through CARES, through paying out everything. What that does is it gives a little bit of relief to the folks who are the subrecipients trying to provide documentation to us, plus the folks reviewing that in order to get the checks cut. So that gives us a little bit of relief into January to complete that process and make sure everybody has time to do it well. Then, for anything that is already in order has been placed. For example, we know that you all invested a significant amount of money in the Health Department's testing equipment. We also know there are some technology things that we have placed orders for. We expected to receive them as of 12:30, but then with supply chain issues and other things, they won't be here in time. We would allow those to continue and remain in place in CARES. But then, for the personnel reimbursement for the internal county buckets, we would like to proceed with that. The reason for that is we feel like that gives the county some flexibility going forward. It also minimizes audit risk. Well, we are exceptionally grateful for the CARES funding and the relief it has provided for the county, for cities, for schools, for our community. It has been tremendous. It's also been a bit of a roller coaster ride, and we're like maybe ready to get off a little and just catch our breath. So we feel like by doing this, by doing the personnel reimbursement, it puts it in the county's general fund. It's an eligible expense. It prevents us from having, you know, changes in rules as we go down the road, which we have seen constantly throughout this time period. We simply get to have the reimbursement, and then we're able to follow the county's rules as opposed to the CARES guidelines and try and keep up with those as we change. So it has many benefits, and so that is why we're recommending that approach. And so as far as I know, the action that you took last week gives us the guidance to do that. So if the Commission would like to go a different direction, we probably need a different vote today, but otherwise, that would be what the finance staff recommends to you as the way to proceed forward.
Okay. Thanks for the summary, and I have added confidence that Brent and Hope and Lauren and your staff have really looked into this pretty seriously, and so thank you for the update. I don't, at this point, I don't see any reason for the Commission to direct you any differently. If there's any other comments or questions, be glad to entertain them. Okay. I don't see any.
All right.
Lindsay, thanks again. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Thank you all so much.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Tom Stoltz, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items C, D, and E this morning.
Okay. Any questions on the consent agenda items? I don't see any. I will recommend approval of consent agenda, I am C, D, and E.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Commission, Commissioners, we discussed briefly, we do have a fire agenda, and for the public, I'd like to either recess or adjourn to the fire agenda and then come back in case, just for other, then Commissioners would be invited to share any season holiday wish or message. So with that, is it a recess or do we adjourn?
Yeah, I think we generally recess, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll make a motion to recess in order to go to the fire agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second for recess. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, I've called the order, the, what's the date today? The December 22nd Fire Agenda, Fire District 1. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call. Commissioner Glasscock.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Madam Clerk, next item?
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of October 14th, 2020.
Commissioners, you had a chance to review the fire minutes, and I don't see any questions, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous fire meeting.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Say.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, Fire Meeting Minutes of October 28th, 2020.
The October, what date was that again?
October 28th.
October 28th Fire Agenda Minutes. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item C, Sedgwick County Emergency Sick Leave Discussion for Fire District Number One.
Good morning, Sheena. Welcome back.
Good morning, Sheena. Welcome back. Thank you. Sheena Schmutz, Chief Human Resources Officer. I am here today once again to discuss the proposal for the sick leave program that is intended for a one-time benefit for employees who are impacted by COVID-19 in 2021. This is the same request that we've made for the regular agenda and would have the same benefits and eligibility requirements for the fire district employees. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions for Sheena? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to approve as presented by Sheena. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you.
You bet. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Tom Stoles again recommend approval of Consent Item D, David, on the Consent Agenda for fire today.
Okay. It's been a recommendation to approve Consent Agenda Item D. Don't see another comment. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item. Being none, okay, we will adjourn the Fire District One meeting, and we'll return from recess for the special meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Do we need to call roll again? Okay. We are now back into the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. I was remiss, I think Commissioner-elect Sarah Lopez has been here. Thank you. I didn't recognize you with your mask on. That's right. So I just wanted to welcome you. I know you've been here the whole meeting and recognize that you're here. So, Madam Clerk, next item. Is this the other? Okay. Thank you for everybody allowing me to have this agenda this way. At this time, I invite any Commissioners to have any message that they would like to share with the public. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commission, and thank you all the staff and everyone watching online. What a year, huh? Recently, the Wichita Business Journal asked this community what we learned in 2020, and writing down on paper what I learned was a very thoughtful experience. Because I had to reflect, I had to look back on the things that have shown a great deal to all of us. Since the beginning, this commission, this Board of Health, has made considerable efforts to slow the spread of this virus. We listened to our medical professionals and supported measures designed to protect this community and our healthcare system. So if and when people do get sick, because we know they will, medical professionals are well-rested and ready to care for the sick and dying. Look at us now, the 22nd day of December. Hanukkah ended a few days ago, Christmas is in just three short days, and in four days, the Kwanzaa celebration will begin. But whatever faith or tradition you celebrate, more than likely, you sit around a table to do so. And this year, we are going to see a lot of empty seats at those dinner tables. We are going to miss friends who are sick, and we ourselves may become ill. So one thing is certain, we will get past this virus. We all know how, and we have the tools to do it. And our brilliant science and medical profession continues to help us fight this through. As much as we want to complain, myself included, we are all alive to do it. There are many people who are gone because they lost their life this year. A virus swept our nation, killing upwards of 320,000 people, last I checked. This virus brought sickness, yes, but it also brought division. At this time, a new year is upon us, and we are all in this together. We have to heal friendships lost and relationships broken. We have all got to stop the partisan divide and work to build each other up. We all have to listen to understand another's point of view. This year, we saw civil unrest right before our eyes in our own community. Racial inequities exist even if we don't see them or experience them ourselves. Poverty, extreme poverty, exists right here. Domestic violence is real and happens sometimes next door to our very homes. 2020, we saw record election turnouts, both in the primary and the general elections. Votes were cast early because people were ready to use their voice. And to all the brave souls who ran for office this year, congratulations to each and every one of you. Win or lose, you still won, right? You should be very proud of your accomplishments. This election cycle showed us just how important every vote is. Sarah Lopez is proof that every vote counts, and no one is more excited than me to have her sit up on this bench. I'll not rehash all the gut-wrenching decisions made this year, because one thing that rings truer now more than ever is that life is precious. The people of this community matter most. The people on the front lines stocking shelves at grocery stores, the people waiting tables in restaurants keeping mouths fed, the people caring for nursing home residents, people like housekeepers and nurses aides and med techs making just enough to maybe put a coat on their child. People in our healthcare system who, exhausted and worn out, work extra hours caring for the sickest of the sick. To the artists, musicians, event planners, creatives who learn a living gig to gig, keep going, keep creating, and don't stop. To the teachers, learning and teaching at the same time, you are a special type, and this world is better because of you. To all the small businesses trying to employ this community and to provide for your families, you are the backbone of economic development. We need you. To all those mentioned, and the people of Sedgwick County, we all have the power to work with each other to create a place that is vibrant, thriving, and a success for all who live here. We just have to decide to do it and then actually do it. To the 3,000-plus employees of Sedgwick County, I am eternally grateful for your dedication to public service and for putting in the work this year. To my fellow commissioners, thank you for your unrelenting service this year. It's been a wild ride, but we made it. Chairman Meitzner, thank you for your calm leadership during what feels like the storm of the century. Hopefully, next year, you'll be able to give us more jokes. To my daughters, you two are my she-ros, and I am eternally grateful for your patience. You teach me new and better ways to love, and I am a better person, because knowing your eyes are on me has me trying a little bit harder to be better each and every day. Finally, to all those in our community who are lonely, overwhelmed, sad, afraid, or feel like giving up, you are not alone. No matter what your social status or position in this world, there is someone here to help you. Reach out. Call Calm Care at 660-7500. They are here for you 24 hours, seven days a week. Each and every week, I am humbled by the grace that is shown and given by real people who lead with their hearts. This year of "You're on mute" has left me wanting to rest, but the momentum is brewing, and renewal happens in 2021. Let's make it happen together. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Hal?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the chance to speak at this time, and I don't have prepared remarks. I do want to say I agree with much of what Commissioner Cruz has just read, and thank you for preparing that. I just want to share that, I want to say thank you to our staff and our first responders, especially, our EMS folks, our 911 personnel, our firefighters, Sheriff's Office, and our jail deputies, and there's so many others I could mention, not just Sedgwick County, but really across this entire county. There's numerous other departments. Let me just say Wichita PD, for example, is very busy this time of year. I'll say thank you to all of them. This is a tough time of year to provide public safety. There's a lot, a lot going on, and in a pandemic, makes it much harder. Say thank you to them especially. I also want to say thank you to our staff. Again, we have roughly 3,000 employees, and I know that Sedgwick County, our number one thing we, number one thing we have here is public services. Provide for the public in so many different ways. I want to say thank you. We couldn't do it without them. I want to say Merry Christmas to each and every one of you and the people that we serve as well. I know that in some ways, we are disconnected from what's going on, because we have jobs, we have income. There's businesses that are struggling, there's families that are out of work. This is a tough time of year, and I want to say we are aware of that. We hope for a much better year next year. But regardless, I hope that you have a time to reflect on how God has been good to us. We're still blessed, and we will get through this, and I look forward to better times next year. 2020 has been very, very challenging, but again, we will get through it. I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you for allowing us to serve you. Appreciate all that you do, and look forward to next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hal. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to each one of our Commissioners. I want to wish each of them a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I agree with their comments. As we go into this Christmas season, we need to reflect on the many blessings that our community and our nation has had. Even though we've been going through a pandemic, we still are a united country, and we are protected by the finest men and women in the world, those that are serving in our military. I know that during the 29 years that I served, I missed many Christmases and New Years and holidays and birthdays, and our military is doing the same thing. In addition, all of our first responders that we have here, and our nurses and our doctors, are missing those same very precious holidays, and I want to thank them for their service. Our staff does a great job. We've already heard it a couple times, but many of them are going to be working on Christmas and New Years, and they will be in our hearts and our prayers. Remember the reason for this season? And God gave us His Begotten Son, and we sincerely appreciate that. I'm praying for each and every one of our folks in our community to make sure that we can get through this pandemic, and we can go into 2021, especially with a vaccine now, that we can move past this and get back to whatever the new normal is. But again, I want to wish each and every one of you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thank you for everything everyone does.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Glasscock?
Yeah, I just have very brief remarks as well. This Christmas season is long overdue, and I know all of us are ready for the new year as well. I just want to echo all the Commissioners' sentiments. Merry Christmas to those that celebrate, happy holidays to those that don't, and looking forward to seeing what the new year holds. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Glasscock. And I will end these comments by thanking each Commissioner for your great comments, and a lot of thanks, a lot of appreciation, a lot of love, a lot of some pain and sorrow that we've experienced.